Please come to order for the January 13, 2015, joint meeting of Glendale City Council and Glendale Economic Development Corporation. We have the roll call, please.
Roll call for council, council members divine.
Here.
Friedman, Najarian.
Here.
Beaver, Harrisonian.
Here.
Roll call for Economic Development Corporation. Board members divine.
Here.
Friedman, Najarian.
Here.
Beaver, Chair Sonian.
Here. May we have the report, please?
Agenda for January 13, 2015, joint public meeting of the City Council and Economic Development Corporation was posted on Thursday, January 8, 2015, on the Baltimore outside City Hall. For you, the first item is minutes of the Special Economic Development Corporation Joint Successor Agency and Economic Development Corporation, meetings of Tuesday, December 9, 2014.
I'll move the minutes.
Second.
Do we have to take a vote on this? Okay, so the minutes are approved as submitted by the majority of council present. Next item, please.
Next item is Director of Economic Development regarding modify activities and not levy assessments within the Adams Square Business Improvement District, 2A is a council resolution of intention to continue to operate suspension of assessment and billing for calendar year 2015.
Mr. Chau.
Yes, sir, very quickly, over the last decade, the redevelopment agency, as it still existed, would provide funding to leverage the BID assessments, business improvement district assessments, that were generated within several different business improvement district areas. This one in particular, the last one remaining outside of the downtown, would be the Adams Square area. Over the last couple of years, the merchants have asked that they be allowed to opt out and effectively suspend the assessment. However, because it is rather arduous to set up a BID in the first place, we're hopeful that at some point in the relatively near future, we could generate enough revenue, even with the dissolution of redevelopment, such that we would be able to reinvigorate the Adams Square Business Improvement District. So what we are asking here is for you to approve a resolution allowing that the assessment be suspended, and we come back and revisit this next year.
So how much revenue would be generated through this assessment?
I believe they generate about $6,000 among those businesses. We would leverage that with $15,000. We haven't done that for a bit, particularly with the dissolution of the redevelopment agency. And we do this in collaboration with the Adams Square BID members. But as I say, it's just such a chore to set up a BID. We would rather run silent for at least foreseeable future, and hopefully at some bright day in the future, we'd come back and be able to augment and leverage whatever they could generate on their own.
So is, do we have some kind of a plan of action to bring this date close, or are we leaving this to the economic sort of health of the country?
No, we would hope and expect while the, I'll defer to Mr. City Attorney, to the extent that the proposed TOT tax increase would generate general fund dollars, some of those general fund dollars, as council directs, could be allocated for economic development. Such economic development could be these BIDs, particularly Adams Square BID. So if the voters were hopefully wise enough to see that spending a nickel to get back a quarter made sense by way of investment in neighborhood BIDs, that would be the primary vehicle for us to cede the Adams Square BID again.
Yes, Mr. Friedman.
And not just from being out in the community and talking to residents, it seems that there are changes coming to Adams Square, possibly. So I think the suspension is a good idea instead of the complete dissolution.
Very well. Should we take a vote on this? Let's have roll call.
I'll move, item two.
Second.
Now let's have a roll call.
Council members divine.
Yes.
Friedman, Najarian.
Yes.
Beaver, Harrisonian.
Yes. Next item, please.
Item three is Director of Economic Development. This is continued from December 9 meeting and December 16 meeting, 2014. It's regarding Downtown Glendale Association's annual work plan budget for the Downtown Glendale Community Benefit District for calendar year 2015. Raise council motion to accept budget.
Okay.
Yes, sir, what you see here is something similar, but with a rather significant wrinkle. In the downtown, there was, for a period of time, several unsuccessful efforts to establish not only a BID, a Business Improvement District, but a PBID, Property-Based Business Improvement District, wherein the assessment is levied on the property owners as a result of a vote of those property owners. What you saw in 2012 finally was this effort coming to fruition, and the result is now the operation with the Downtown Glendale Association, the DGA. The assessment that is generated pulls in, I believe, a little under a million dollars. Their operating budget, however, is a little over with some carryovers that they are able to profile for any questions that the council may have. It's important to note that although the council reviews the work plan and approves this budget, the PBID is set up as an independent body, the city having one vote on the overall board based on the assessment paid by the city vis-à-vis the parking lots or for the value of those parking lots, any kind of utility easements, any properties that we own in the Business Improvement District. But the vast majority is paid by such large property owners like GGP, Americana, Brand, CBRE, Maguire Properties. They all are represented on the board, or at least the majority of those are represented on the board. Our assessment.
Maguire's still there?
Say again.
Maguire's still there?
Maguire's still there. I think they pay the fifth largest assessment.
Ken.
We pay, we are assessed about $85,000. The Americana, by virtue of the presence of the parking structure on successor agency property, former redevelopment agency property, pays about $10,000 of that for other Americana-related properties. Thus, our assessment's about $72,000, and that gets shotgunned out over again, Public Works for the parking lots, GWP, and the successor agency for other properties that we own within the district. With that all said, I know we have the president of the DGA board, Mr. Lemo here, and if you have any specific questions, I'm sure he can address those for you.
So let me ask you a couple of questions before we go to Mr. Lemo. So explain this to me. The PBID or the BID, is, does the Montrose Shopping Park also operate as a BID?
I believe that is a BID, yes.
BID, okay. So the BID is, the main difference is that it's, the assessment is not on the property, but on?
On the businesses.
On the business itself, okay. Okay, so the PBID, just like the BID, right, is created by council, but you said that there's, does the status of the BID differ from PBID in terms of their independence of action, or it's not?
They both have a modicum of independence, greater than a modicum of independence. They have quasi-independence from the city and city council. They are created by a vote of those particular assessment payers, but again, the difference being a BID is levied on the businesses that are there, the PBID is on the property owners. Theoretically, they pass that on to their tenants.
Okay, so.
And just for clarification, the Montrose Shopping Park Association is on the businesses. They are the ones that pay the assessment in Montrose.
Okay, so it's not the properties, it's the businesses?
Just for clarification, it's not property, yes.
My understanding.
So you said the BIDs created by the vote of the participating businesses, or PBID would be the participating properties?
Yes, those properties that are assessed.
How are we involved?
We own property in the downtown vis-à-vis our parking lots.
Why are we, why are we approving or not approving of their budgets?
Because we, under the laws, the state and highway code that governs PBIDs and BIDs, the city council, as you receive and then remit the funds from the county of LA, as you pass those monies through our accounts to the DGA, you have to sign off effectively.
Okay, so we're sort of acting like, like go-betweens? In a sense, we're like a processing, like a clearing, clearing center?
Effectively, the county provides, remits to us, we remit to DGA.
Okay. Questions? Okay, well, we have two speakers. We have Rick Lemo, the president, and we have Dennis De Pietro. Mr. Lemo?
I'm primarily for questions only.
Oh, okay.
We should.
Yeah, let's invite Mr. De Pietro.
Then I'll be available for whatever questions you may have.
I have some questions. Maybe after Mr.
Yes, Mr. De Pietro, would you like to go first?
I think he just wants to answer questions as opposed to, how much time do you think you need?
Just a couple of minutes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, let's have three minutes.
Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is Dennis De Pietro, and I've had the pleasure of being involved since almost the inception of the Downtown Glendale Association BID, and serves, serve, and have served since its inception as the chairman of the sidewalk operations, the beautifications, and the order committee, which is responsible to oversee the actual operations of the company that cleans the ambassadors that are hired and so on. So a large part of the, of the budget has gone through the committee. And I urge you to approve this unanimously. The BID has done some extraordinary work through the wonderful collaboration between the consultants that we have, the all volunteer board, that are phenomenal, that are made up of both large and small business owners and property owners, all, again, all volunteer. And the result is a wonderful record of compliments from the businesses, the property owners in the, in the district, and the visitors who come. We have a booth for the cruise night, and it's incredible to hear the amount of compliments that, that are received for Downtown Glendale, and in small part, or hopefully in large part, because of the work of the, of all the property owners who donate a significant amount of money, as the city manager says, about a million dollars, to, to improve the Downtown Glendale area, and to, and to invest in it, and to have a say in how it's operated. So I urge you again to, to unanimously approve this and continue the work, and again, continue the work of the wonderful collaboration that we have between business owners, the organization, the staff that we have, and the ambassadors, and all the people that you see. If you have any questions for me, I'm, I'm here to, to answer anything I can to, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. De Pietro. Mr. Lemo? Najarian?
Mayor, council, good afternoon.
You're here for questions, or do you have a prepared statement?
Just for questions. I know this is going to shock you, but I do not have a prepared statement.
So were the scarecrows your idea?
Actually, most of what has happened good in the district is not my idea. The scarecrows were a collaboration of our, of the new city staff here, and what worked down in the Little Italy district of San Diego. And so those and the toy soldiers were, all of the holiday color were their ideas.
I did, I thought that was a nice touch to the downtown area. Was there any vandalism or any theft involved? Because those were pretty expensive toy soldiers. I mean, if you go somewhere, they're at least a couple hundred bucks.
I will tell you, the one thing that I think speaks really highly of Glendale is the scarecrows and all that. We had a few, you know, broken pumpkins and that type of thing, but certainly not much. I think the average street has more pumpkins broken on it during Halloween. In regards to the toy soldiers, we had some people that, probably young teenagers that went by and put them in different positions and things that we had to fix the next morning. But the, and we had two arms, I think, broken. But the one thing that I thought was best about it was we did a collaboration, that was suggested by one of the staff members to do a collaboration with the school district, and all of the podiums that they sat on were decorated by art students from the Glendale Unified School District.
Two arms broken?
Two arms.
Did they neglect to pay their dues to the bid, or what? No, I'm just kidding. I thought it really brought a nice touch downtown. I also want to compliment you on the, the ambassadors. They do a great job, and my office is on Central, so I'm not technically in the bid, but I see them up and down orange, which is, which is typically a trash, a lot of trash collects at the curb, and they were doing a good job. My only sort of comment is, can we move away from the big, rolling trash bin? Because they look like, more like janitors than ambassadors. Is there something smaller, something a little less, you know what I mean? I mean, they're doing a great, their, their actions are great, but just rolling around with that, I hate, you know.
Yeah, I really don't like the way.
As a Glendale janitor, as opposed to.
I think you're right. I don't like the way they look either. I think we will actually do two things. I'm sure that Block by Block, which is the company that handles that, has a bit of a catalog that you can choose from. The other thing is, we have planned for February, a field trip of all of our board members to go down to view another community benefit district. And so we can also find out from them how they're handling things, because you're right, they, they don't fit all of the other branding, so we can, we can certainly deal with that. And the other thing that I want to make sure we don't let slip by is the safety side of things. Our ambassadors don't get involved in safety, but by answering questions that people have and giving people directions that the police used to do two years ago, it frees up police time to fright real crime, as opposed to just giving people directions.
I think they're clearly a deterrent. How late in the evening do they?
Usually about 7:30, but when there's a special event, or there's something special going on at the Alex Theater, we have a bank of hours that we can add on to, and we keep them there until at least the performance begins. Except for things like, you know, I don't know if you know this, I think you do, because you gave us a commendation, we have been a sponsor of Cruise Night, and so we keep people there all night long. In fact, we actually were, had extra ambassadors that guarded the stage area, so that you didn't have to have security people there, it just looked a little nicer.
Yes.
I have a comment, a couple of comments. I just think the association is doing a great job. And I have to tell you that during the holidays, I was at a few events, and I, I met a teacher, actually, I met her twice, from RD White. And she said that her students that live in apartments and have no Christmas, no Thanksgiving, no Halloween, they would go downtown and take pictures of themselves, because they felt that that was their home, and those were their decorations. And so I applaud you, all of you, for what you're doing, and especially all the businesses that, that donate, or that are assessed and contribute. I think it's fantastic.
And one of the other things I think is important for you to know is, we did not handle our marketing the way a lot of community benefit districts or business improvement districts do. A lion's share of our marketing is done through charities we give to, and that makes people aware of us. And since we've been around, it's been over $200,000 that we have given to local charity in just two years. And, and one of those, well, obviously the Alex Theater, because it's the heart of the district, but also one of those that we've given a lot to is Cruise Night, as the major presenting sponsor of Cruise Night.
What other charities in, in the city do you donate?
Arthritis Foundation for the Jingle Bell Run. I should know all of the.
The Downtown Dash, do you do?
Yes, we had, contributed to the Downtown Dash in the past. I think the hospital suspended that this year, but I hear that it might be back. So yes, we have, we've been a good sponsor of that. But the Alex Theater is in the heart of the district, so most of our attention, $110,000 to the Alex Theater.
Okay, now that my clients are finished praising your, praising you and singing your praise, I'm going to ask you some tough questions. So what do these ambassadors do, other than, you know, take out the trash, and what's the function?
The ambassadors really have three or four primary functions. First and foremost, the number one rule for an ambassador is, if you're wearing sunglasses on a sunny day, take them off and look each and every person that comes down our street in the eyes with a "Good morning, welcome to Glendale," or "Good afternoon," those types of things. Engage people. Oddly enough, when they do that, people feel more comfortable asking directions or asking for information. They are very well-versed on the lay of the land, where things are in the city. They pick up trash, they clean gum off the sidewalk with these, the same things that you use to open a paint can, and it's been a long time since I've done anything like that, so I'm not sure. Like little mini spatulas. Papers picked up when they see them. Clean the fronts, the glass. We do power washing, and so after power washing, the ambassadors will clean their glass. They're just working constantly to have that, have both interaction and clean and safe. It's the primary role of the ambassador.
So does, when, when, when you're hiring these ambassadors, is an effort being made to hire some bilingual ones?
We don't.
And I'll specifically ask.
Yeah, we do not hire the ambassadors.
You don't hire the ambassadors?
We do not hire the ambassadors. They're hired by a company called Block by Block.
Okay, well.
They're known throughout the country as.
When you're hiring Block by Block, or you're, you're contracting them, right, for this service?
That's correct.
Are you asking them to make sure that they have some people who speak a language other than English? For specific, I'll ask specifically.
Sure.
I mean, are there any Armenian-speaking ambassadors? From what I understand, there aren't any. That's concerning to me, because a lot of the people that Mr. Devine was talking about who live in the apartments in South Glendale, and who rely on Downtown Glendale as maybe their Christmas venue, they're specifically the ones that are often challenged in their knowledge of the English language.
That's a very good question.
We're talking about something like 40% of the city's population. I think it's.
That's a very good point. However, ambassadors, their first and foremost goal is to deal with people who are new to Glendale, who are visitors to Glendale, who are tourists or businesses to Glendale. We don't ask them, because we don't know where, where we could stop. I mean, we should, in my opinion, you know, we would have people that speak Spanish, and people that certainly speak Armenian. In today's world with, if you've taken a look at some of the sales, you'd have people that speak Korean or Chinese. For what unfortunately, and I hope that not too many of them are watching, for what we're paying for what our job is, we deal first and foremost with, the majority of tourists that come here do have some concept of English language. If they're going to ask us a question, then we're going to point it out on a map. Now, let's say that we have someone who does not, a visitor, or even a resident, who does not speak English. They will point out where they'd like to, you know, what they're looking for on the map, restaurant or what have you, and will give them directions, and in fact, quite often, an ambassador will stop what they're doing and walk someone where they're going. But we would not, and I don't know how we would be able to afford that. Remember that our job first and foremost is clean and safe. And so we don't, we don't make any special requirements, because I don't know where we would stop.
I mean, I, I think can make an effort. I mean, you know, you can stop where, you know, you don't have to ask for Indonesian-speaking ambassadors, or, I don't know, Malaysian-speaking ambassadors.
No, no, I'm saying Spanish and Chinese.
Yeah, so Spanish and Armenian and Korean are realistic languages in the city of Glendale. And I assure you, when, when I'm downtown, and I work in downtown, I work on Brand Boulevard, and I'm in the Americana area almost every day, the people that are there on a daily basis are quite reflective of the face of Glendale. I mean, it's, the mix is the same, you know, whether the people are visiting, not visiting, whatever, the mix is about the same. So I think an effort should be made to make these ambassadors more effective, and they can't be effective by simply looking at their eyes, but then being unable to follow up with the second step, which is actually communicate with those people.
Yeah, I think that we can make a suggestion to Block by Block to see what level of bilingual.
Right.
They can have.
I think if, if.
I think we're kind of stuck at a $12 to $14 an hour job, and we cannot increase that.
I assure you, I assure you, there are legions of bilingual youth, or elderly, or whatever, who would love to have those jobs.
No, I, I understand what you're saying. I want to make sure that I'm honest and fair with you. It is very difficult to get and keep a job with our ambassadors. For example, we don't allow any visible tattoos, and we don't allow you to change the clothing. So if you have a neck tattoo, you can't wear a turtleneck and get our job, okay? We put a lot of encumbrances on Block by Block. I think you're, you make a very good point. We'll suggest it to them, but we don't get that intricately involved, because what's most important for us first is clean, secondly, directions, and third, most importantly, focus on tourists. New people to the town. But we'll mention it to them.
What we'll do is put Mr. Lemo in contact with our own operations.
GYA.
GYA, the Community Services and Parks operation.
Right.
I'm very confident that we can get folks.
At the end of the day, they're taking, they're taking our money, your money, whatever you want to call it, they'll make an effort, but.
I'm sorry?
They will, they will make an effort to find the people, because they're being paid, and this is America, money talks, and they will find the people, they will make an effort. I assure you, if, if this suggestion is made to them with a certain degree of conviction, it's just the right thing to do, that's all. My next question is, I'm concerned about Maryland, that street, because it's just not, it's not appealing. I mean, it, I know that it's got a lot of problems, I mean, there are systemic issues, but the simple things, like the lights on those trees, I mean, I've probably, since I got elected, I've been talking about that, and it seems like I'm talking just to myself. I talked to staff, staff said, well, the DGA deals with that, okay? And the fountain, the fountain, we, I guess we made the fountain work for about a month, and it doesn't, hasn't worked since then. But this is smack in downtown of Glendale, it's Maryland, it's, we're trying to give some life to that area, that part of Glendale, trying to give some depth to downtown Glendale. So what's DGA doing with that regard? From what I understand, they've tried, nothing's happened.
In fairness to DGA.
That's not true.
This one is, I think this one is much more focused on, on the city. As council has, has directed, we got the fountains running, the southern fountain works, the lights are on, and it's working well. Fortunately, the northern one, you're right, it worked for about a month. We have found that there is a leak underground, and so we have received the estimate. It's about, it could be anywhere from $15,000 to $20,000 for the repair, best case, presuming that as we jackhammer down, we find the leak and we can repair it. It could very well be a little more than that. So we are evaluating, kind of on a, on a cost-benefit basis, whether we replace that fountain, or replace both fountains, and do not just a, a temporary slapdash, kind of, let's make it into a planter, is basically what they were up till last year, when we rehabilitated them, earlier this year, I guess it would be, no, last year, we're only in January, but would be the actual removal of them and the earnest redesign of those, so that they are something that's appealing for the businesses on Maryland. We will be before you, finally, with the, the actual cost for repair as we see it, best case and worst case, and even some schematics of if we just took them out altogether. Those obligations, we had worked out with DGA to do maintenance, but the obligations to do the repair, because it's in our right of way, that does come back to, to the city. So we will have something before you, I promise you.
Okay.
And in all fairness, we do have, before we were able to form the bid, we spent a lot of volunteer hours trying to target certain things. There are many things that we might not, you know, get to doing the way we would like to have them done for the good of the district for four or five years up the road, because we do not have an unlimited budget. So, you know, first and foremost, holiday decor was an easy thing to start to tackle. The banner program, an easy thing to tackle. You know, quite frankly, I, I'm not terribly pleased with Maryland either, and like to give that improvement. Remember that we are not a bid, we are a community benefit district. So we try and focus our dollars on where those dollars are coming in, and our target for the first three years has absolutely positively been Brand Boulevard and a list of things that we do on Brand Boulevard that have been in the management plan for two and a half years now. So that's something that, we can't do everything, we'd love to, but we also have to respect those contributing to the bid, and we cannot raise the bid.
But the people who are off of Brand are also contributing members?
Some are, and some are not.
How does that, how does that work?
Not all, the bid, the bid district was drawn in a geographic way, that not everything off of Maryland is in the bid. That was drawn almost three years ago now, based upon where the immediate attention was needed to help the downtown district. And that's something else I'd like to comment on, is the fact that the Americana at Brand and the Glendale Galleria are the two heaviest contributors.
Sure.
And are absolutely the least benefited by anything in the district, because their commitment is, improve Brand the whole way. This is a volunteer organization, so we do as much as we can within the confines of our budget, knowing full well that, remember, our budget, a small portion of it goes to different areas. Sidewalk and beautification is the, is the, is the most within the district, and that's primarily employees.
Okay. Well, I, I hope that at some point, DGA expands its sort of scope, or at least its center of attention beyond Brand. I, I understand that Galleria and Americana, they pay the most money, I get it, but.
And we're just doing it for community benefit.
It's the downtown, right? It's the downtown, right? It's the downtown business district. It's not just Brand Boulevard, or even Brand and Central. So, going back to Maryland, how about the tree lights?
It's only, it's only a small part of Central, it's not all of Central.
So, it's not even all of Central?
No.
How about the tree lights? I mean, how expensive can it possibly be to?
We will entail...
I mean, the Christmas season is over, the holiday season is over, so we're, now we're looking at the next year.
Yeah, I think, I think what you need to look at, though, is it was never, originally, prior to my even getting involved, when they couldn't get the bid started, it was never intended that the bid was going to take over holiday decor or tree lights of any kind. When I met with the city, and I said, "No, no, 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 this is, this is going to be our responsibility."
Okay.
We have a four-year, five-year plan, and we are slightly ahead in that plan of taking it over from the city. So, it's going to be the end of five years before we really have that up and running the way we want. We're actually transitioning certain areas with the city to help let the city spend their money in other ways. So, we are, it's, I mean, just, there is a very skilled plan that was put into effect, but we don't, we, we could never take those over with the snap of a finger, with under a million dollars, as you know, because you have budgets that you have to deal with much more than that. A million dollars doesn't go as far today as it did 10 years ago.
Mr. Mayor, the answer to your question, however, is that we've been waiting for the final bid amount for the fountain, now we have that, and considering how much it is, what we'll do is, is the small, you're talking about the LED lights on the lights that uplight the trees on Maryland, I'm guessing?
Yeah, the trees that, that would make the place look glow-festive.
Those would be the ones that, that we can do much more quickly. We thought it would make sense to put it all together in one big basket, but considering just how deep that hole may be for the fountain, the lights will be something that we can easily knock off, and we'll end up doing that through Public Works.
Okay.
So, will you guys be taking care of the lighting of those trees?
We will install new lights for those trees.
I think, well, at this point, yeah, if DGA stretched, maybe the city should step in, because again, Maryland is very anemic, it looks bad, and those corridors that connect Brand with Maryland, some of those shopping areas are horrible condition. So, I mean, let's do something, let's do something to give it some life.
Is there a possibility that once the lemley comes to that area, it'll, you know, everything will kind of change, I think, the whole dynamics?
The lemley will certainly improve the area. I think the other thing we have to remember is that the bid, any bid, can never be the total replacement of a property owner's responsibility. We want to try and make it easier on them, we want to try and have them profit from our involvement by not having to spend as much, but we, we have to inspire any way that we can to get the property owners engaged to fix things like that. And, and we did see a little of that this summer. People were putting tables in some of those alleyways and heating out there, and so, I think it's coming around just very slowly.
Mr. Pietro, did you want to add something?
I just wanted to ask about the Maryland, what portion of Maryland is that? Most of it is not.
Yeah, a very small portion of Maryland is in the bid, and, and to that, when we first began, the, the process, I mean, Maryland, the sidewalks were filthy. If you go down Maryland now, the bid is only on the west side of Maryland, in the, in the two blocks that is only, that is part...
Only the two blocks.
So, the east, east side doesn't, isn't covered by the DGA?
No, it's not.
So, like, Five Star Theater, all that, on the east side, is not...
It's not within our bid.
And in addition to the things that...
It is.
Okay.
The Five Star Theater?
It is, I thought so, yeah, because this is the first time I'm hearing that it's not. That makes sense.
It starts at Wilson, goes to Harvard.
Okay. But, but in addition, the ambassadors also perform a large thing in terms of being the eyes and ears for Glendale PD, which is a phenomenal organization, because there's interface with them. Also, they, they've categorized deficiencies to help the city, Public Works, and they're, I mean, they do a phenomenal amount of resource work for, to provide information to the city, so that there's a wonderful collaboration with the city. So, it, those ambassadors are out there, and the, the metrics that are, that are set up really have benefited in identifying potential liability issues, and having, you know, dealing with those things. They've done a phenomenal amount of work with the, with the news racks, and improving, improving those which have been an eyesore, and not, and we're not talking, like Rick said, we think about Brand Boulevard as being the downtown, and it certainly is, but we also, the Downtown Glendale Association extends in all the, those streets up to the, to the freeway. So, they take care of all, all the, you know, maintenance of the sidewalks and so on through there. So, there's a phenomenal amount of work that is being done, that, that isn't visible, in a sense, to the, to the average person, that, 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 that the business owners are, are paying for to, to help that collaboration with the city.
Okay. Thank you. And my last comment is to urge the DGA to keep all contracts local, in the sense that unless we're, you know, buying a Mack truck, a truck, or, or something that can't be manufactured, can't be performed, a service that cannot be performed in Glendale, I don't see why, there any reason to go outside of Glendale, because this is such a large city, we have so many businesses, we, I mean, we do pretty much everything. We don't have heavy industry, maybe, that's about it, so, that's it.
That's, that's a very good comment. I just wanted you to be aware of something, because we, we have a policy that we always want to first stay within the district.
Even better.
And the good news is, we have been able to do that to a great extent, and then, when we can't find it in the district, we try and do it in Glendale, as long as the business is a member of our Chamber of Commerce, and, and we have done that. In fact, the, the real businesses that we have to go outside for are businesses that have either categories, that have either gone out of business in Glendale, or never ever existed in Glendale. And also, when we do that, absolutely everything we do with an expenditure over $1,000 requires a minimum of three bids. So, if the lowest bid is outside of Glendale, but it's close, we defer to Glendale. So, we have a policy in place that we absolutely do follow.
So, let me ask you that, just backtrack for a second. So, you go outside of the district into Glendale, so long as they're members of the Glendale Chamber?
Yeah, we like them to be members of the Glendale Chamber of Commerce.
And if that's not the case, then you go outside, you go beyond those borders?
Well, yeah, but we, basically, when it's over $1,000?
Right.
We do it strictly by bid. It makes no difference what their geographic location is. It's got to be a bid.
Okay, so, any contract...
So, for example, Block by Block was one of four major companies that bid, and they won that bid, after three days of meticulously going through each and every line.
And these, these bidding processes are, are public, I mean, they're, they're transparent, they're...
Everything we do is.
Documented.
The only thing that is not, which, as you know, you have the same situation we do, is any personnel issues.
Sure, sure. Okay. Well, I, all I'm saying is that this is our city, we look out for our businesses, just as you do, I'm sure, you're a business, you know, bad business person yourself, and we want to make sure the money, to the extent possible, stays in Glendale, because there's no reason for it to go outside, unless someone's offering the same service for much, much cheaper value.
Well, and we, yeah, you bring up another good point, we do focus on value, not just...
Oh, yeah, of course, I mean, if someone's...
Very good point, yeah.
Yeah, we shouldn't be, be eye-gouged, just because that business happens to be in Glendale, no. But to the extent that it's, you know, there's multiple businesses that, that I can bid for something, there's no reason for any contract to go to San Diego, or San Francisco, or even Thousand Oaks, or Irvine, so, it's all my, it's all my comments. Colleagues have comments. So...
I'll move the item.
Second.
Okay. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmembers, Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Jarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
And what is next?
Next item is adjournment.
Adjourned.
Do we adjourn? For the redevelopment corporation?
Adjourned.
Second for that.
City council.
Second.
Thank you.
We adjourn for the council.
Second.
Adjourned for council also.